Yes. I was not ready. Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Booley.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segras is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
Knightman.
I am also in attendance.
I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Report.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. The first item on our agenda is the study session led by Director Victor Abegbu on the ERP project, and I believe you are ready to go. Is that correct?
I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me once again here. The very first study session that the ITI department brought before you, we talked in general about majority of the concerns and the procedures, the processes, and challenges as well in the ITI department. And I stated at the time that subsequently I will be bringing before the committee here, before the board here, each individual initiative. And at that point, then we can talk more about it. Well, here we are. The very first initiative that we are bringing before you today is the initiative of the ERP solution for the township. As it is today, we have several... Let me back it up. When I came before you the last time, we had several initiatives that we brought before you. And a few of them had been taken care of. But today, the one that we highlighted is the ERP solution. But I also want to take this time to make sure that I keep all these initiatives in front of you so that we don't have out of mind, out of sight. We want to make sure that you constantly remember the true situation as it relates to ITI department. And so today, we're gonna talk more about the ERP solution. Today, the township does have quite a lot of software and applications that they utilize for different things. And I shared this particular screen the last time. It's a breakdown of, you know, who uses what and where, and what does it do for the township. So you have a variation of systems, applications, and software as well as it relates to the different departments. And it's not an indictment on any department in terms of, you know, how many are you using, but more for us in terms of what is it that you're doing? What are you using to do what you're doing? How has it been going? How beneficial has it been for every department in the township? As you can see, of course, ITI department actually, by nature of what we do, do have quite a good number of applications and systems that we utilize. With me really today, I'm kinda rambling here. I should have introduced a couple of my colleagues who are here with me. So part of me, let me take a step back on that one. So with me today, I have Joe Kacinski. He's the manager in the ITI department, as well as Devon Landers. She's also a manager in the ITI department. So in case I stumble down, be frazzled, they might just pause me for a minute to correct a few things. All right. So we have a total of about 160. The slide here says 148. By the time we took this, by the time we analyzed this, at that time, it was 148. But today, I think the total number is about 162, I believe. The number keeps on growing. And so this adds to the reason why we really, really need to look at the whole ERP conversation. Because it gives us an opportunity to consolidate a few things and make things work in a way that makes sense for us. When we look at that whole 160 or 148, whichever one you want to refer to, it's broken down into few different segments. One, you have the segment of business applications. And then you have the other ones, asset management, and of course, the ones that are in web CMS. ERP speaks to, or can speak to, all of the above, or it can speak to some of them, or it can speak to just one section. We're going into this knowing fully well that we're not making any decision on anything, or anything that we're not limiting ourselves. But today, I'm kinda going to specifically talk about the ERP with the mindset of the business application side of things. So that's by default the way I'm going to concentrate our conversation today. But please be aware that the general ERP conversation can be all. However, for the sake of the township and where we are today, we're going to concentrate on the business application side of things. And so in that portfolio, we have the likes of Tyler from New World, and we have the likes of BSNA. We have the likes of CityView, and, you know, human resource solution as well thrown in there. I'm gonna advance to the next slide, but I'll come back to this slide as well. So given that we want to concentrate on the business applications, I want to make sure that we expand this. On the Tyler side, it currently handles the financials. It currently handles water billing, payroll, and sort of partial, limited section of dog licenses. And as we saw in the previous slide, BSNA handles our assessing and taxes, while CityView handles our permits, inspections, and licenses. I don't know if anybody has any questions so far in terms of the layout of the land, because it's very crucial that we sort of picture this as we advance this conversation. Any questions so far on this? I don't want to, you know, go all the way to the end and, you know, maybe we've forgotten something because I really want to make sure that we get it as, you know, as we're discussing this. All right. So I go back to the previous slide, where we have Tyler, BSNA, CityView, human resource. And we'll keep that in mind as we go to the next one. So let's look at this on an in-depth format. And particularly with a view of the cost of things. If you look at the ones that we've put in the quadrant of business applications, and I put this slide in here so that it can represent everything application-wise, what we're paying annually for it, so that we can keep it in mind as we advance the conversation. We have the likes of AgGIS provided by Earth3. We're currently paying $55,000 a year. Now, this is the current, what we, the cost that you're seeing here, these are the costs based on our current. Every year, each vendor adds maybe 3% or 5%, depending on the adjustment allowance on the MSA. That's the master service agreement that we have with them. Web slash CMS, we, everything in... But no, not everything inside Civic Plus, but just the Civic Plus with the AudioEye, we're paying $40,000. Again, on Civic Plus, we have the likes of online code hosting, Civic Rec and AudioEye. Again, we have $900. FOIA request, next request. Now, funny enough, Michael, you mentioned about this, that this is now under their portfolio, Civic Plus. We're paying about $18,000. The Civic Rec alone, we're paying about $30,000. The community development part of things, which is CityView, provided by Harris Computer Systems, we're paying about $71,000. Document Management System, Onbase, provided by, supported by Kira Works, we're paying about $12,000. Now, if you look at BSNA, that deals with accessing treasurers or fixed assets, we're paying $12,000 as well. BSNA, the online component of it, $21,000. Civic Works, supported by Azteca, we're paying $46,200. Now, Tyler, the new world, we're paying $134,000. It's very important that we, you know, keep things in context as we look at this because that's gonna form part of our conversation later on. And again, of course, as you can see, Tyler on its own bears the brunt of our expense here. The reason why we're putting this is because if you go back to the previous slide here, you realize that Tyler handles the core of our operation, all right? It handles the core of our operation. It handles the financial, the water billing, the payroll, and to an extent, the dog licenses I mentioned before. And if we're looking at an ERP, really, it tells us that we have to pay close attention to this particular item, given that this is what we have, right? And it handles the core of our business operation. And the more we look at it, the more we realize, oh, wait a second, we really have to do something. I know there's been some loose conversations out there, whether the provider of this particular portfolio, as we may refer to it, had previously indicated that they will no longer support this particular solution. The true conversation, because we've had meetings with them, the true conversation, or the true situation is that while they are not actively developing the particular solution that we are using in-house, they are not going to turn their back on it. They will continue to support it. But the questions remain, if a vendor tells you that they are no longer actively going to, you know, then it's up to us to really think twice about how we proceed with that. The second thing to keep in mind as we are looking at this, as it reflected, is that if our business solution is this way, right? And we have, as I showed previously, and we have this, right? Then it behooves us to do something to sort of shrink this number and really put us in a better format. The goal for us is to really find ways to consolidate what we have. Because what we saw over the period that we analyzed this is that you have several things here, like for instance, you have BSNA can actually, if you implement that module, it does have a module that can handle payroll. Tyler has a model that can handle payroll. CityView, if you enable that, it can also handle payroll, right? And so we saw things like this happening over and over throughout the system. Hence, you have something like this, where almost like every department went out and got what they feel like is gonna work for them. And so when you have every department going out to get what works best for them, there isn't any, there isn't any conversations that were had at the time to see how can we really make the best out of what we have. And so today, the whole conversation about ERPs, making sense of what we have, being on a platform that will help us to move forward in a way that really provides efficiency for the township. So we keep that in mind. So back to the conversation with regards to Tyler. It's not an indictment on Tyler, but more or less, how can we be more efficient in what we are doing, all right? And by right, the company can certainly continue to support. They are not going to turn their backs on us. I want to make sure that that is clear. They're not going to turn their backs on us. They are here to stay, to support us, but it cannot be further developed, all right? Yes?
So you said we have about 160?
Yes.
What, and I must have missed this. Why are these 10 up here as opposed, out of the 160?
As opposed to 160? Because these 10, again, I'm coming before you on the topic of ERP, right? So you have several other applications that doesn't have anything per se to do with ERP. And ERP speaks to the core of business solution of the township. So we looked into it and narrowed down those things that are core to the business operation of the township. That's why you have this.
It's like one of those applications might be like Microsoft Office or something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
All right, I understand. Sorry. Thank you.
And part of those, that number also includes, you know, what you're using for dog licenses, and we're gonna talk about that later on, all right? Because that's in the other section in terms of webs and CMS. We're gonna talk about that. However, keep in mind that, as I mentioned, the dog licenses, that alone can also be piped into whatever new solution, again, providing an opportunity for us to consolidate. So you may not see that specifically in this list, but it's on the other side because today, it lives in the world of the web and the CMS. Makes sense? Okay. All right, so if then this is the core of our business operation, then we have to really pay close attention to it as we further this conversation about ERP. Currently, whatever solution that we're using to provide all this, they are all hosted here in the township, right? Do I need to mute so I don't tell the whole world about our internal infrastructure?
Right, I get, yeah. You don't have to.
But...
If anybody wants to ask you afterwards, they can...
Yeah, they can, they can ask us for further questions, right? So sometimes I'm being very sensitive about, you know, telling the whole world how my house is built, but, you know, that's... However, this is, this is what we have, all right? And we are trying as much as possible to make sure, because again, part of the exercise for us was to look at that framework that provides this service internally. That platform that provides this internally, there is a lifespan to it. And that lifespan is also at the point where we really have to do something about it. And so you look again at the combination of factors. We are saying, okay, if we're going for an ERP solution, what might it look for? What might it, what might it be like, really? There are questions about having, providing what we call SaaS solutions, Software as a Service. SaaS solution or manage, government management software suite that will cover the entire operation of the township. Or you find a hybrid that will cover majority of your functions. We're not sure yet how we are going to, or where we are going to land. But one thing is for sure. When we started the process, we analyzed things. And then after that, we went around and recruited committee members. These are people who we call subject matter experts in their area so that they can be part of this conversation as we seek to find something that works for the entire township. It's been quite some task, but we are able to read. Definitely with the support of the board here, we should be able to provide the township with something that makes sense. Now, one conversation is to provide that as a cloud service. Another option is to provide that as an on-prem service. But if you're going the line of the on-prem service, please also remember, as I said before, that the platform on which we are currently providing the, the platform on which we are providing the current service is at the end of its life cycle. So we have to do something about that. So you can take this conversation on two tangents, right? One is to holistically look at the software as a service solution, find the ERP that works in the cloud, or build something here, find a solution that is still hosted here. The jury is out. So we are going to be asking very soon for a way to do so. And for us to do so, we recognize that, given the nature of our internal staffing at the moment, we will need additional help by way of a consultant to be able to navigate through this. We've been able to gather all our needs, gather all our wants, been able to articulate it in form of an actual RFP. But going through the entire process of interviewing and, you know, identifying every other thing that goes with it is one that really, we recognize right away that we need a consultant. And the scope of the consultant work with us would be one of phase one. Also, again, look at the needs that we've collected the data on, go through the process, review the requirements that we've, you know, that we've collected, and then develop an RFP, which again, in this case, we've built out a framework for the RFP. We've actually written the RFP. And if there's two of things, would be to review the actual proposals when you publish the RFP, review the proposals, and then go through the entire process of interviewing the vendors because they're gonna have to come make demonstration about their products and all that, and help us through the entire process of selecting the solution that works for the township. I'm looking at my time here because I know I really, really want to finish right on time. So that's, in a nutshell, the scope of what we are asking for based on the help that we are expecting to get from a consultant for this process. I'll pause here for a second and ask if there's any questions so far.
So basically, like you said, you've spent, you know, the past year, 10 months, interviewing all the departments and finding out what they have, and that's how you came up with the numbers. And this consultant you're asking for is to help do the RFQ and then implement it, basically?
So yes. So the consultant will help us throughout the entire process. Now, this entire process, like I said, again, is not going to happen without the help of the stakeholders, right? The stakeholders are those people I've called the subject matter expert. These are people who are in the different departments, who are super users. They know, and some of you here actually might be in the, you know, might be part of the stakeholder meeting. Because we really know that there's no way we can provide a solution that works very well for the township without the vast experiences that we have here in the township. The township staff here, personnel, are the people that really make it work. And so when you're prescribing any solution for anything, you really need people who are doing the stuff that will help you design a solution that will work, that will give you the kind of result that you want. So yes, we've interviewed, gone through a whole process of identifying the, you know, various needs and the various wants, articulated that in our first draft of an RFP document. But there's a lot more to be done in that process. The committee is ready. We're just waiting for, you know, authorization to engage a consultant, and then we'll start the process. Thank you for that question. Any question?
So I might be jumping ahead, but what I'm wondering is, and I'm not necessarily against the engagement of a consultant because I can see the benefit of that, because it's a lot of work to be done there, but do you have an idea of how much a consultant would cost us?
So before I ask that question, let me put certain things in context.
Sure.
We looked around to see what does this kind of work involve? What's involved? And who has done this type of work before inside of, you know, organizational entities such as us? And we were lucky enough to discover that Battle Creek just, or rather, they are going through the same thing. And we looked at Battle Creek again, and we realized that Battle Creek is just really like us. They have Tyler. They want to get out of Tyler. And they also have majority of what we have. They have BSNA. Their environment is just similar to us. And when we looked further into Tyler, we saw that Tyler actually floated an RFP to do the work. We requested for the information from Battle Creek, and they gave us the information. We looked at it. The total cost of that RFP was somewhere around $400,000. But that's inclusive of implementation. That means that the cost for just the consulting work to navigate through the ERP process was just about $100,000. And so for us, given the fact that we had done quite a lot of work, when I say, and Madam Supervisor alluded to the fact that over the past few months, we've really been working the ground to make sure that we understand our environment and know what's required in our environment, and then be able to articulate an initial draft of an RFP, we've done quite a lot of work to that regard. So when we looked around, we realized that we have, we had a consultant that we've been working with here in the township, who understands the environment. And we asked them, can you help us, you know, on this? They said yes, that they do this quite often. And as it turns out as well, the same vendor, the same consultant, is the same consultant that won the bid for Battle Creek. So when they gave us a quote, they didn't know that we already also, or rather, we went out and got the quote for Battle Creek. When they gave us a quote, it was for somewhere around $70,000. So we went back to them and said, okay, can you explain this? They said, well, this is in recognition of the fact that you guys have done quite some work. Otherwise, it would have cost more. Well, we can see that because, you know, the same, again, apples to apples, same environment, said trying to get out of the same type of scenario in Battle Creek. And we pushed the envelope some more, and they came back down from $77,000 to $69,500. So that's where we are today. And that's in recognition of the amount of work that had been done by the staff here. So today, we have a valid quote to engage a consultant for $69,500. You're welcome.
Yes. Actually, the second half of that was, was going to be my question about other communities that have utilized consultants for this type of work. And so it's good to hear that you've done some comparisons on that. Have you or your staff had any experience utilizing a consultant in this way before? In previous, your previous work? Or have we done it here, here before? Or you can sit over here.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, this particular consultant, the township utilized in 2018 when we decided to upgrade our phones, our phone system. We started it very similar to what, how we started the RFP process for the ERP and suddenly realized that there were components or features of how to run this and new, modern phone systems, what capabilities that they have that we just did not have exposure to. So we contracted with that consultant at that time. They interviewed us. They interviewed some departments, wrote the RFP with the scope. We... We published it, and they helped us perform an analysis and make a selection. So, we do have precedence with our own, within our own department. And by happenstance, it's the exact same very consultant that we utilized for the phone project.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Victor, have you, in your past experience with the Detroit libraries or elsewhere?
I've worked with several consultants, not necessarily this particular consultant in time past, though I've been aware of the work of this particular consultant in the past, where they did some work for the organization I worked for at the time. But, yeah, I've worked, you know, with consultants on projects like this. I do recall quite well, working with consultants during the transition for City of Detroit from payroll system to what we had before to what they had now. So, the process of working with a consultant is not, and that is foreign to me.
And both of you have felt that it's been beneficial to have them in those processes, and we came out better than not having them?
Very much so. I don't know how much time we have today for me to list for you the benefits of working with a consultant, particularly as it relates to our current environment. One of the slides I have here, just to give you an idea, I've always wanted to put the names of the entire ITI staff over there. What you see is what you get. You know, what you see there is what you get. And it means that, really, in-house, there are certain things that we cannot handle on our own, because we still have to do the daily routine that, you know, we still have to take care of the township business. And so, when a project like ERP comes on, which is something that is very crucial, you know, if you remember the beginning of my slides, I tried to let you know those things that are core to the functions of the township, something that is this important, I believe that we should pay a good attention to return. Use of a consultant is not, or rather, I should say, it should be money well spent.
Thanks.
Like Victor says, I think it makes it quicker. I just looked up some statistics, so they're saying in 2022, in just the first half, there were 236.1 million ransomware attacks worldwide. And the majority, you know, a lot of them being municipalities, education centers, things like that. And I think, Joe, you had stated that the statistic is a million hits a day we're getting?
We're doing about a million a week. Unfortunately, last week, that jumped to 2.4 million.
This shows, you know, the quicker we get it done and we make ourselves secure. Thanks. Any other questions? Anything else, Victor?
I believe my next slide is basically, again, letting you know that we are seeking authorization to engage a consultant. Projection and timeline is to be determined, because everything is, you know, going to be hinged on the moment we engage a consultant and their availability to work with us. But there's a guarantee that they will make resources available to us right away. However, it's not lost on me. I want to make sure I also keep certain things in front of you. There are other things that we have to consider and other factors that will affect, you know, this particular initiative. One of them being that we do currently have other competing initiatives or other competing projects going on. Again, it speaks to the essence of having a consultant, particularly with this. You know, the township does have multiple initiative and projects going on. So, spreading of resources becomes something that is very important, that we have to look closely at. Availability of staff, as I've talked about, and of course, the, you know, elephant in the room is funding. How much can we store more? Because that would determine how we, you know, what solution that we will prescribe for the township. We don't know what it is yet, but we'd like to know what fits for us. Then we talk about costs, right? And then we resize our shoe, so to say. I think that's, in a nutshell, what I want to bring before you. I would not leave you without letting you know that, again, we have several initiatives that will be coming before you as time goes on. You know, if you want to take some more look at these initiatives, so that when we come before you, to expand the conversation on these initiatives, it will not be a foreign language. But I certainly want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this, and yes.
So, Victor, while you're doing the ERP, you know, implementation or going through the whole process of getting vendors, are you, I know it's a funding issue, but are you going to look into the cybersecurity, you know, getting any sort of analysis? Because that's kind of, I understand as, that it's kind of becoming a big issue for municipalities?
Definitely, yes. And certainly, you will hear more on that part on Friday. So, stay tuned on Friday. You will hear more on that on Friday. But, again, we want to make sure that we spend some time just today as it relates to the ERP solution. Now, keep in mind also that in doing this, in furthering the conversation about the ERP system, we are also taking a stab at some elements of security, some elements of cybersecurity, as Madam Supervisor hinted. So, that's all I have to say on that for now.
Any other questions? So, this is also part of one of our RBAs for later, that we're going to move on in a few minutes. Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
Okay. I just want to thank Victor and your team. I just want to thank Victor and your team. I know you guys have been working really hard for many, many months, and I appreciate all your hard work on this, because this is a big endeavor. So, I appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Yes, same as Diane said, thank you very much for your hard work. Like you said, you've interviewed everybody a couple times to try to find out what solutions they had, and then you went back again to go into more depth. So, thank you. All right. All right, thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is the general calendar, where we have a couple RBAs. The first one is, Consider Approval of Resolution Approving Settlement Agreement in Proposed Opioid Litigation.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution for the settlement agreement in proposed opioid litigation. Authorize Township Supervisor to sign any necessary documents in order to effectuate the settlement.
Motion made by Clerk Sliger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The board has been asked to adopt a resolution approving proposed regional settlement that involves a limited subset of all national cases. This is the first settlement involving a grocery store chain that includes pharmacies in its stores. Deputy Supervisor, Joe, do you want to comment on anything?
Just briefly, this is a part of the group of cases settling lawsuits related to the opioid use epidemic in the country. This settlement involves Meyer, which has, obviously, pharmaceutical departments in their stores, and their role in perpetuating the opioid use epidemic. The total amount of the settlement for the states of Michigan, Kentucky, Indiana, Illinois, and Ohio is approximately $35 million. Canton Township is likely to see somewhere between $17,000 and $18,000 if the board chooses to participate in the settlement agreement. And those funds will then have to be used towards fighting the opioid use epidemic in the community.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, Consider Approval of ERP Project Assistance Project Management.
Madam Supervisor, I move to create a new purchase order to Plant Moran in an amount not to exceed $69,500 for ERP replacement project management services. And to amend, the budget is follows. Increase revenues to the fund balance appropriation account of $1,043.31. Increase expenditures to professional and contractual services in the amount of $69,500. And then increase expenditures to the contingency fund in the amount of $973,531.
Motion made by Clerk Sliger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The ITI department has been tasked to lead the township through the process of evaluating various existing business applications and to find opportunities to consolidate those applications into a new, modern solution. The primary goal of such consolidation is to improve and streamline the organization's current business practices to improve employee efficiencies and to enhance resident experiences when conducting online business within the township. Over the past several months, the ITI department has collected information from departments to better understand the requirements and needs pertaining to an ERP system. To best incorporate these needs into an RFP, the ITI director contacted Plant Moran, who is in a long relationship with the township, to serve as project manager on the ERP replacement project. ITI is requesting permission to engage the services of Plant Moran to assist ITI with the numerous phases of this ERP replacement project. Director Abagbo, do you want to add anything?
Not at the moment, except that, you know, it's really crucial for the township to do all we can to advance this at this moment.
Further questions or comments? Kate?
Go ahead.
Steven?
All right. So, yeah, after the presentation, fully in favor of it, the only thing that's a little unusual is the moving of the expenditures and the revenues. I see that they add up, but the $69,000, I understand what that's for, but the $973,000, is that just moving from one account to another in preparation for implementing the ERP project?
I believe Wendy, the finance director, is online. She can speak very well to this one.
Sure. That was to move the $1 million that the board had set aside for the ERP, to go ahead and add that full amount back into the ITI budget now in anticipation of issuing and awarding an RFP moving forward, or a solution moving forward.
Yep. Okay, makes sense. I just wanted to confirm that that's what it was for. So, thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciate your bringing this to us. As we know, I mean, as we just saw, your department is small, and this is a huge project. And I think we've had a good relationship with Plant and Moran in the past, and they're currently working on some things for us. And I'm just, I think this is definitely going to be money well spent, so thank you.
Any other questions? Tanya?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and add on to what Kate said, that it is important, you know, most of the, in this day of information and technology, it is important that we maintain those systems and keep them up to date, so that, you know, it is, it is more convenient for our users, our employees, to use them, and for, at the end of the day, our citizens will benefit from it if we have proper working systems that are up to date. So, it's time we implemented this. Thank you.
Yes. I just, good job getting Plant Moran down to the 70K for consulting. I do, I am a little bit concerned about, you know, I know we earmarked a million dollars for this purpose, and then it's good to have it in contingency, and any money not spent in contingency can roll back into the, back to the fund balance if need be. But, yeah, it would be fantastic if the implementation and software costs aren't, you know, $900,000. It's just getting a little bit of sticker shock on that right now, seeing it in print. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so just to let everyone know, also, we have made requests to our state senators, state representatives, as well as our, we met with Debbie Stabenow's team today, and we made a request to them. Because protecting our communities against cybersecurity is so expensive, with $300,000 to start and $100,000 every year, we ask that they create a negotiated settlement with vendors, so that all of our townships and cities can be protected, you know, because that's important. Because if we have a smaller township or city that isn't protected, they can affect all of us. So, while protecting our residents against cybersecurity, as well as our funds and budgets and transactions, we have to make sure that everyone's protected. So, this is also part of our initiative. So, while we have to move forward with protecting our current township, we are asking that our senators and congresspeople also help us protect everyone else. Okay. All right, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is seven o'clock PM. So, we are going to take a break until then, while other people come in, because it's the Town Hall and License Plate Readers. So, I'm, so we'll do the public comments on the License Plate Readers then, but does anyone have comments on anything but the License Plate Readers, which is going to start at seven o'clock? If you do, you can go to the podium, and we'll take public comment for three minutes for that. But if you're all, everyone's here for License Plate Readers, that will start in approximately 11 minutes, while others can come in. Okay, we'll just take a little 10-minute resource. Thanks.
Adjourn?
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn for 10 minutes.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Sliger, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'd like to call to order that we are having a Town Hall on License Plate Readers. So, this Town Hall was precipitated as a presentation we did, and the board is here to listen, to take feedback from the community and make decisions based on the community input. We are also getting emails and calls, so we'll take that input also. So, at this time, what I would do is I would introduce Chief Chad Bao to start, but then when we go to the questions, we'll do three-minute questions, and so that everybody gets a chance to talk, and we'll also take some of those that are online. So, Chief Chad, would you like to start?
Thank you, Supervisor and Board, for having us tonight. Thanks for the wonderful attendance tonight from many, many people that we've known over the years, and thank you for the ACLU who's in our presence tonight. Thank you for coming out on this policy issue, because I know it's not only important to this community, it's important to the state and how we look at this more uniformly. Also, I believe we might have Mike Andes, one of our lieutenants, on the Zoom tonight. He's home ill, but he wanted to participate. And I think it's critical to mention him, because he's the one who applied for the grant and has given us this opportunity to consider as, with our citizens, and maybe in the future with our board. So, thank you for everyone being here. The four-man, I'll go like this, we'll try to keep it focused on the License Plate Reader. From there, we'll try to clarify questions. We'll go through a presentation with Sergeant Falk. He's an investigator, one of the best investigators we've ever had in the organization, along with Lieutenant Mike Andes, who might be on our Zoom right now. Next to me is Captain Byly, great investigator in his own right, but now he's on our administrative team, and we review everything that we do in the organization between the sergeants, the lieutenants, the captains, and myself. And it's important, too, when you look at our organization, one of key, critical things, especially if I, being a citizen and as an administrator, it's important to understand the oversight, the audit, and the controls that we have internally in our organization. One of the things that helps us along the way is about 15 years ago, we became accredited at the highest level in the United States with Kalia. It's called the gold standard, the advanced accreditation standard, which started in 2007 for our organization. You're going to see some different accreditations throughout the state with the Michigan Association, those chiefs of police. Just keep in mind, your police department is accredited at the highest level in the nation. So, with that, everything comes down to service. So, today is about clarifying what this could offer the board to consider as an option. It's a real measured approach. It's one intersection. We've chosen that intersection, the Michigan and Beck- We've chosen that intersection in Michigan and Beck because there's 30,000 vehicles that go through that area. With that area also, if we were to chose a location on Ford Road, Ford Road, as we all know, is going to be torn up at some point and redesigned. We didn't want to put something up and take it back down. We're trying to see how this would actually work from a fixed location. What we actually use it for is Part 1 Crimes, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit before we get started with the presentation. Part 1 Crimes are essentially the barometer. It kind of gives us an idea of what we are doing as a police department, how we're doing as a police department. You know, this community is really a great place to live. It's safe, but the barometer is Part 1 Crimes. It's set forth by the FBI. And I'll go through what those crimes actually are, and I'm going to read them because I forget them. But, you know, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, arson, B and E, home invasion, and these are critical here. Larceny, larceny of car parts, stolen cars, and retail crime. We had 1,279 of these last year. We had over 50,000, or almost 50,000 calls for service last year. And when you look at what the types of crimes in, nationwide, the crimes are going up. In Canton, just the car park crimes, like your catalytic converters, you've probably heard about those being stolen. Some of you hopefully didn't experience it, but some of you may have. That went up 73% last year, only 97, so it's a small sample size. But our retail crime, which was 423 last year, went up 21%. So it gives you an idea of what we'll actually use these, the License Plate Reader for. We want to be more efficient, reactive to the needs of the township, and using License Plate Readers would give us an opportunity to locate people responsible for crime if they use the car. In the state of Michigan, people use cars to get from point to point. But this action tonight is deliberate. It's intentional. We want to be transparent with how we perform as a police department, and this gives you a voice to ask not only questions, but be a part of how we police in your community. We'll talk about the standards through the PowerPoint. We'll get through all that tonight. And one of the things that I think it's important to understand, this is a tool for police officers to use, investigators to use, to help find people responsible for crime. And one of the things that's strange about being a police officer is the dichotomy. Not only are we trying to find those responsible, we're also responsible for protecting their rights. So what we have a lot of confidence in is how we look at how we do work, how we audit what our police officers do, and we'll explain a little bit through the License Plate Reader PowerPoint, how we would do that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sergeant Adam Falk to go over this presentation. Keep in mind, we did this, a study session not too long ago, it was similar to this PowerPoint. We scaled it down a little bit because we want to get to your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Again, thank you to the Board for allowing us here to, and allowing me to pitch this again to you and the residents and the people of the community to hear what we have to say about the License Plate Readers. I'm a 20-year veteran of the agency, as my chief said. I investigate and supervise our surveillance team, so we specialize in fugitive narcotics, any type of organized retail crime investigation. So you'll see it and you'll hear it in my PowerPoint, that 70% of the crimes that are committed involve a vehicle. So you'll understand, I guess, had a better understanding of why this is so important to us. I live, breathe, and sleep and eat investigations, so I'm very passionate about this. I can talk on this topic for hours, and I'm going to scale it back as best as I can here and try to stick to the PowerPoint. So again, this is License Plate Readers. On our first slide, these are the types of License Plate Readers that are available for law enforcement. The first one is mobile, so you can, those can be attached to patrol vehicles, they can be attached to commercial vehicles. Fixed LPRs can be attached to traffic poles or utility poles, which is what we're going to pitch here. And then covert operations, undercover vehicles could be equipped with LPRs, construction barrels, something a little more covert, or some type of a mobile trailer of some kind. If you look in that picture, that patrol car is actually one of our patrol cars that was equipped with mobile LPRs in the past. We don't have those any longer, but those are definitely an option and a great option for investigators. How do LPRs work? So first, it starts with a mobile or fixed LPR camera that'll capture an image of a license plate, which also produces a GPS coordinate and a date and timestamp of where that was recorded at. Together, the license plate image and the GPS coordinate and timestamp produces what they call, or what we call a detection, a detection on that vehicle. The detection is stored in the secure cloud, which is an LPR record in addition to all historical records. We'll touch on that a little bit more throughout the PowerPoint. What data is collected? This is very important. A picture of the vehicle and the license plate, date and time the vehicle was scanned, location, so the GPS coordinates is obviously very important to us, the make, model, and color of the vehicle, and the direction of travel. What data is not collected? This is important to everybody that, this is where we do not violate people's constitutional rights. We do not collect a photograph of the driver, the vehicle occupants, the vehicle owner's personal information, such as name, date of birth, address, or other identifying information on the person or occupants of that vehicle at the time that the detection is scanned. The LPR data storage, I'll read directly from this PowerPoint because it's very important that I read this properly and with the information on there. The data is the property of the respected customer. Motorola has no rights or ownership to any of this data. So customers, which would be us, we manage and control access to all of the data. Law enforcement agencies can choose to share with other law enforcement agencies as well. The data and retention period is set by the agency's policy and procedures. Once the data is purged, it's gone forever and it's not retrievable. The data is stored in a secured Amazon Web Service site in Ash, I'm sorry, Ashburn, Virginia, which is also CGIS compliant, which is what we use to, I guess, oversee our information that we use on a daily basis as law enforcement officers or agencies. What use do LPRs have for law enforcement officers? The obvious, to identify the crimes in progress. Patrol officers can be alerted to a specific vehicle related to a specific crime and at a specific location. LPR cameras are working, this is one of the biggest, I guess, bonuses of these LPR cameras is they're working 24/7. It's not like an officer who has to take breaks or is called away to investigate another crime or calls off sick, so to speak. These LPR cameras are working 24/7. They don't get called away from the scene and don't take any breaks, so any information is not missed. Studies, as I mentioned earlier, that have suggested that over 70% of crimes involve the use of a motor vehicle. LPRs can assist officers with identifying a suspect where a suspect likely wouldn't have never been identified. LPRs drastically improve the chances of the case being solved while, at the same time, decreasing the number of resources needed to solve that case. So as I had mentioned, where we may have not identified a suspect, it's not because we're capturing a photo of that person, it's because we're capturing a photo of the vehicle and license plate, which then we can use our law enforcement databases to investigate who occupies that vehicle or who drives it on a normal basis, or may, or maybe who was actually driving it at the time of the crime, and that's our ultimate goal. Will LPRs be used to enforce traffic laws? So the answer, short answer, yes. However, we're looking for Part 1 crimes to investigate. So drunk drivers, leaving the scene of a personal injury accident, road rage incident where some of the, where crime was committed, and those are just some of the smaller crimes that we would investigate utilizing the LPR system. I can, again, talk for hours on specific crimes that we've used it for. Those are the ones that come off the top of my head, where as far as civil infractions, we're not going to be utilizing the LPR program to investigate or enforce any type of civil infractions, which obviously are traffic laws, speeding, red light stop signs, or other civil infractions that you might be aware of. Accountability, this is our checks and balances. Required information for conducting plate searches, a call for service or a case number, so the officer or investigator who is utilizing the LPR system is required to document why they're utilizing that system. So a call for service or a case number is related to a crime that they are investigating or handling at the time that they utilize the LPR system. And again, reason for the, the reason for the search would be the crime that they're investigating. The auditing, each search is tracked and retained for 10 years, which comprises, or comprises of the officer's name, case number, reason, date and time, and even the IP address of the officer, or of the officer that's stored and saved in that system. So live alerts for patrol, once the LPR scans a license plate, the plate is automatically run against a CGIS compliant hot list that is pulled from the NCIC by the Michigan State Police. So NCIC is the National Crime Information Center. These hot lists or plates that are entered into the system, it's purged four times a day, and the officer or investigator who maybe gets that alert or is investigating a type of alert, they're required still to run it through the law enforcement information center to verify that that information is still valid. Lean will alert the officer to the following, and again, these are just some of the, some of, I guess, the bonuses and pluses that are, that come along with the usage in the program for LPRs, is wanted subjects, stolen vehicles, Amber Alerts, stolen license plates, missing persons, somebody who might be on a terrorist watch list. Investigations, identify a suspect vehicle. So query vehicles based on descriptions. If we get a description of a vehicle, or a color of a vehicle, or a specific identifying mark on a vehicle, we're able to utilize that and search for that in the system and possibly get an investigative lead. A partial plate, that's another tool that is used with the LPR program, and of course, color and year of the vehicle. We can cross reference similar types of crimes to identify common vehicles at those locations. Photographic evidence of a vehicle in the area before and after the crime. And then the biggest one is criminals, obviously criminals or people we're investigating, they try to hide where they stay or where they live, or where they're hiding out for a specific period of time. The LPR program can capture a license plate of a vehicle that, that we're investigating, parked at a certain location, maybe one or two times, and that gives us another location to locate a vehicle, therefore get us to locating a suspect in a crime that we're investigating. This picture here is an exact picture of the L5F fixed LPR. This is the one that we would install if this gets approved. It has 90% actually at speeds of up to 150 miles per hour. It has a better image quality at night, and it's hardwired only, so it doesn't run off of solar power or, or battery. In Michigan, as we know, we can't rely on the sun. So therefore, we're going to need hardwired cameras so that we, we know and we're comfortable that they're working 24/7. And they're generally used on high traffic roads, as the chief had mentioned, an area like as Michigan and Beck, even eastbound, just eastbound, that on average, there's 30,000 vehicles that travel through that, east or west. I think eastbound is a little bit less than westbound according to the count, but up to, so 60,000 vehicles go through that area on any given day, so that's obviously collecting a lot of data throughout a daytime through the program. So this past May, we were provided a demo camera that we affixed to a mobile trailer. We had some successes with that, and we'll go over that, but it was positioned on a, and deployed on Hagerty Road, south of Joy, which as you guys know, is one of our main, one of our main thoroughfares through the township. We had two success stories during that time period that I was actually involved in, so I can talk on that. The first one was a sexual assault of a teenager. This were, this happened at a gas station in the area of Joy and Hagerty. There was a young female in there who was groped by a 41-year-old male. She was 18 years old, groped her breast inside of the gas station. I'm sorry, this was at Joy and Sheldon. The vehicle description and a partial plate was identified initially in the investigation. However, detectives utilized the LPR system to search that information, and we received an investigative lead on this vehicle, and that's the actual truck there that you see in the photograph. Utilizing the law enforcement information systems that we have access to, we were able to identify the suspect, and myself and my surveillance team immediately went out and located the subject and brought him into justice. The LPR that was on Hagerty, south of Joy, is what we utilized to identify that vehicle and identify that suspect. This was a, another success story. This was at Joy and Hagerty. This is a repeat drunk driving offender who actually ran into a gas pump at the gas station and then fled the scene. The vehicle description was given out of a silver Ford van, and a direction of travel, direction of travel being southbound on Hagerty Road from Joy. Our officers, investigators, were obviously aware that we had the LPR position there on the demo, and utilized that system, and were able to locate and arrest the subject almost immediately, in part due to the LPR. The subject was a highly intoxicated subject and very dangerous to the citizens, and was taken off the road immediately, and had multiple convictions and arrests for OWIs operating while intoxicated in the past. This is another incident, a success story with utilizing LPR, the LPR program. Again, I was involved in this personally, so I, I have some personal knowledge on how this all occurred, but this began as an investigation in mid-Michigan in Flint, where an individual had assaulted his mother of his child and left her in a building. He then set the building on fire, and she ended up dying as a result of that. The subject fled that area, came back down into the Washtenaw-Canton area, and then proceeded to be involved in a drive-by shooting locally in, just in the Ypsilanti. Once that shooting occurred, he fled into Canton and tried to separate himself from the vehicle that he utilized in this, these two crimes. He left the vehicle parked, and those photos on there are actual photos, the one in the bottom-left corner is from our dash cam of one of our law enforcement officers, where the investigators in Washtenaw County and mid-Michigan got an alert by an LPR scan that the vehicle was currently sitting in our Walmart parking lot at Michigan and Belleville. Canton was, Canton officers were immediately notified, they responded to the area, and immediately located the suspect vehicle. No one was, or no one was occupying the vehicle at the time, so I was involved in it immediately after that. We utilized the LPR system and identified a vehicle that the subject was picked up in and was associated with from a few months past. That information was quickly provided to the United States Marshals Service, and with that information that we gathered and provided to them, they were able to immediately locate the subject up back in the Flint area and arrested him and brought him to justice on those two crimes. This, this next case was a purse snatching case where multiple females were victimizing elderly females at our local grocery stores. It was here, and there was also one in Plymouth Township. So multiple here in Canton and one in Plymouth Township where they were utilizing rental vehicles, which again, that's an exact photo of the vehicle there, utilizing rental vehicles to victimize these people in our stores. They would watch the, these ladies come to their vehicles as they're loading their groceries into their vehicles, they would drive up literally and grab their purses and steal their items, and then utilize their credit cards to make their own personal purchases for whatever that they were looking for. With that being said, detectives identified one of the suspects. She had a tether on, so she had a GPS tether on, tether on her ankle. We saw in a video, we were able to identify her. She had no known vehicles associated with her. However, one surveillance camera at one of the stores caught this, that vehicle photo right there. We utilized the LPR system and located a plate that was associated with somebody else associated with her. Like I said, you can go, I can talk for hours on these things, but how we get to these things is, is very complex at times. There was another male associated with her that had rented a vehicle that matched the description. We were able to locate the vehicle quickly, set up surveillance, and arrest all three females that were involved from all those incidents that you see documented on the, on the slide there. And both females that were involved and arrested gave full confessions on the crime. This slide here just outlines the grant that Lieutenant Andes had put in for and was awarded. So CPD was awarded the grant in fall of '22. The grant is specific to Motorola LPRs, and you see the, the amount on there, which covers all the cameras that we're requesting at this point. I went through that very quickly. I would obviously like to take any questions or concerns after the chief talks.
Started and turning it over to the supervisor. I believe she's going to try to moderate and help facilitate the questions tonight. I just want to keep in mind, too, we have Gabriel Dressner. She's from the ACLU. And when we looked at how we implement a policy and how we present something like this, not only to the this, not only to the citizen, citizens, but to the board, we looked for a direction. And we have a policy we've had in place on how we use LPRs for over five years, about five years now. As we take the next step, or consider to take the next step in implementation, and in the measure, you know, just one intersection, we look for direction from law, and right now, there isn't law. And I know she's working, we've been speaking a little bit about what we can do at the next, at the next level, which is maybe some uniformity at the state level around the law. So she's here also to potentially answer any questions as it relates to what the ACLU is doing around this as a tool for law enforcement. So, if you would, supervisor.
Actually, yes, that's a good segue. Would you mind actually going to the podium and maybe talking about some of the concerns or questions you might have, or your thoughts on this? Thank you. You're Ms. Gabrielle from the ACLU, correct?
Do I have to push a button, or is it just?
It should be on, go ahead.
Great, thank you. So, hi everyone, my name is Gabrielle Dresner. As chief said, I am with the ACLU of Michigan as their policy strategist, and we have been talking for past couple of weeks or so on license plate readers. They are quickly becoming a hot-button issue in Michigan. If you do a Google search, they are all over the place. And so, I've had the chance to take a look at the policy that Canton has, and I mean, first of all, it's great that Canton has a policy at all, we always appreciate a starting point. Overall, I think the policy looks great. You know, I'm sure there are a few places where I could offer some suggestions based on the ACLU's model policy, which, as chief mentioned, we are trying to work to get some state uniformity in the form of legislation on guidance for these LPRs. And basically, what our guidance says is what was covered in the PowerPoint, limited use, limited data retention. And that's what we're really looking for here, is not trapping citizens in this web of suspicion simply for driving through an intersection. So, I actually do have one question. You mentioned something about 60,000 cars going through the intersection daily, was that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got that correct. So one thing that I was curious about with that was the retention of those 60,000 plates. So, in your policy, it says that you store the data for five years, which is in alignment with the federal DPBA. And I was wondering, do all those 60,000 plates get stored for those five years for driving through that intersection?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So that would likely be where we would differ. The ACLU policy recommends keeping data no longer than 14 days if they are not in a criminal investigation. Of course, if there's a hit, if there is some sort of investigative aspect to that, that, you know, might not apply, you might need to keep that data a little bit longer necessary for the investigation, we completely understand that. But our policy recommendation is 14 days, which I believe differs from the Canton policy. So, I mean, I, I'm happy to take any questions. I think the PowerPoint covered the LPRs very well, and covered the policy of the Canton Department very well, so if anyone has questions on their privacy concerns.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll just, we'll, okay, if you wouldn't mind, you can actually take a seat at one of our chairs over there, and then you'll, as, as the people come up, we would ask them to come to the podium so everybody can hear. So if you can take a seat, you'll get a microphone. Thank you. Okay, everybody, so what we're gonna do to get everybody a chance is we will limit questions to three minutes. Now, what, what's gonna happen is if everybody goes through, you can come back up and ask additional questions, but we are gonna ask that you not yield time to anyone, so we can get through everybody. I also have people online that can raise their hands. But I will put the clock up, and so it helps everyone out, and we can, you can ask your questions or comments, and then we can have our staff answer it. So let's put this up. Actually, Mr. Andes, did you wanna say anything? I know that you're online also.
I have nothing to say at this point.
Okay.
If there's any further questions, I can, I can help with, I will.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, let me just put this up. Okay, so the first person, whoever would like to go up, you can form a line or go up one at a time, and you can ask your question. State your name, please, that would help everybody know where you're from, if you're from an organization or a resident, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having this conversation. I believe it's really important that we facilitate this, and that policies are just not implemented without asking the community. My name's Daniel Hayes. My parents have lived in Plymouth Township since I've been born, and I'm in my mid-30s. So I've had a lot of time to think about what the community is like, how the community has changed over the years. I've also lived primarily in Michigan, but I've seen what life is like outside of Michigan, in China, and South Korea. So I have a better idea of what surveillance can look like at a large scale. So, I also understand businesses and why they might want to oppose things like shrink. I worked at IKEA for five years, so I greatly understand why that's also an issue. So the first thing I wanna bring up is, again, happy to be here and happy this conversation's happening. However, I think it's really important to note the framing of the conversation. Whenever you are in a position, and when people in positions of power are having a conversation with you, it is important to know that those people have a policy in mind that they are trying to orient themselves to, and that they're trying to share. So in this situation, I think there is an important policy related to understanding public safety, but I think that is primarily the lens here. The lens is not considering necessarily civil liberties, and only at the end did we bring in the ACLU, and for a minimal amount of time. So, I have a few questions with that in mind. First, in regard to data retention or data policies, it said that it was five years. At the same time, you said for your audit, that information would be kept for 10 years. So I'm curious how those are associated with each other, that's one question. Secondly, what if the policy is to change? Who will be informed about the policy change? How will you disseminate that information to the public? I think that's really important. I do appreciate that it's on a small scale here, but at the same time, I also think that, how do we know you're not gonna alter and change the policy without people knowing? Another question that I have is related to consent. There is no way for me to consent to have my license plate being searched. I can drive past there, or I cannot drive past there, but there is no consent. I cannot opt out of being surveilled. The only way I can opt out is to not drive by. So I am automatically opted in if I am pursuing that route. I must change my behavior. I have several other things I'd like to talk about, but I also wanna give other people time to talk, and I look forward to conversing more about this, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you wanna speak to?
Yeah, that'd be great. The retention, we, we have a current policy of five years. We would work with the manufacturer to decide what the retention policy is, and we have to consider what the state of Michigan retention policy requirement is, which would be one year. We, in our general conversations before we even got to this point, we were considering a 90-day or 30-day, but we would have to make steps and get it approved by the board, number one, and get it approved by the state of Michigan when we change our retention policy. That's my understanding of it. So we would follow the retention policy of the state of Michigan. We've always just referred to the state of Michigan, because it was much easier than trying to change retention policies by and large for a police department. Your second question, policies and how they're changed, I think we're one of the few agencies, or one of the first agencies to have forward-facing policies for everyone, so they're available right now on the website. You can go to our website, our website, I will state right now, we got some work to do on that, but you can find them. And of course, if you wanna contact my office, I'd be happy to provide any policies. Our policies are generated internally, and that's where the review is. Board, the township board does have board policies, but they're not related to the police department specifically. Consent, you're exactly right, you wouldn't be consenting. And I don't know of a, another way to state that if you drove through an intersection where there's LPRs, which is throughout the state of Michigan now, including your freeways that we drive, your plate's gonna be, a picture's gonna be taken of your car and your plate. So, good point.
Just to follow up to that, it's okay, if you've got it in my time, it's okay. But I was gonna say, with that in mind, was there any potential future for someone to opt out, or to?
Mr. West, so we'll give everybody a chance, if you wanna come back up after you can. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Ms. Gabriel, is, did you wanna add to that at all?
Yeah, so your first question about the retention, maybe I misunderstood. So, my impression was that the license plate data was retained for five years, but the auditing data was retained for longer, and I believe the auditing data was who accessed the LPR system, not which plates were captured by it. So I know five years is still a long time, and that may not assuage your fears, but I do think that might be a little bit of the miscommunication, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Right on point. It doesn't, it wouldn't show us, my understanding, the location where that car was, but it would show the officer, the reason why, the case number associated, the justification for the search. We would need that for internal affairs to make sure we're doing what we should be doing for you.
Thank you, next.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Khalil Kanda, I'm a resident of Canton, been here about 25 years. I guess the first question I wanted to ask was, the crimes that you described that the LPRs helped catch on Hagerty Road, before we had this technology, what would be the technique of the police force to apprehend the criminals? I mean, did, before we had license plate readers, would, would some of those criminals have gotten away? I'm, I'm just questioning the need for it, that's number one. And number two, what's to protect us from this growing and from Beck and, and Michigan Avenue starting to grow all over? You're saying it's only gonna be one, are we guaranteed it's only gonna be one in Canton? Will it?
Is there a threat of this?
Spreading all over the community? I'm not quite fond of having my, my car and my plate on a list when you're looking for I guess there's, some people would say, if you have, if you haven't broken the law, you have nothing to fear, but it's, it's, I don't know, it's kinda creepy to me. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't disagree, as a, you know, a resident myself, it is weird, you know, you know, but it's growing, it's a tool, it's throughout the United States, it's being used, but it doesn't mean Canton has to just adopt it blindly. That's why we're here, an intentional approach to see what the feeling and the sentiment is. Your first question, the techniques, like just simply, in the first case with the sexual assault, that likely would have never been solved.
Never been solved.
Right. This, you know, what it does cut down on is surveillance time. You know, there's a lot of time spent to locate cars and people where they actually are at, whether my, this team is in Detroit, or whether they're on the west side of the state looking for people responsible for more of the, the higher crimes. This cuts down a lot of work done by those, and it's, it's a safety issue, too. They're not as tired, they know where to go, and they know where to start, and it's a more efficient way of doing police work. But at the same time, your information's collected, and, you know, you went to Target, and next thing you know, you're on a, you're on a list for a year. So, we understand that. The guarantee about the spread, I can't guarantee anything, I can't guarantee this would even pass our board. I just wanna see where we're at before we even take that step. Other communities have just implemented without citizen input, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Up to the board if this spreads.
Khalil, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you wanna add anything, Gabriel?
Um, yeah, I will just say that this is spreading already, not to just incite fear, but there are some 40 police departments across Michigan that already utilize license plate readers, so for this community at least, having this conversation, taking the citizens into account and their fears into account, and also, thank you for bringing the ACLU in and making sure that there are not any sort of unconstitutional pieces to this, I think is a really crucial aspect of that, so.
Yes, and like you said, so basically, this is a listening session for the board, including emails and phone calls we get, and then we decide what, what, where we go from there. Okay, thank you, next.
Good evening, my name's Brad Holt, I am also a resident here in Canton Township. I have two questions. My first one is that I heard in the presentation that the data that we are collecting could be shared with other departments, correct? And that many other departments are using this system in Michigan already. Is that, that is correct?
That's correct.
So, I applaud that we are trying to develop a policy to govern the sharing of this data and keep timing, I'm very, no, that's great, you guys are doing a great job. My concern is, are there any guardrails in place in the sharing of this data? You know, we have a policy, but could you be sharing this data with a department that has no policy? Is that possible at this point? Because I don't, I'm hearing that there is no statewide jurisdiction or statewide policy that's been developed yet to govern this across all these different jurisdictions.
I, I think we could answer that specifically anecdotally. How do you share right now? How does that work for us?
So I'll get a, a phone call or a request from another law enforcement investigator. They have to, again, the checks and balances, they have to provide me with a crime and a case number that is related to this specific search. Then I make the decision whether that meets our criteria to provide that information to them. So short answer, yes, if they're investigating a crime and we're able to assist them with them, we will provide them with that data.
Right, I understand that, but you're not gonna be reviewing the sharing of the data based on their policy of the guarding of that data, just on the utility of the data, is that what you just said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, I went online and looked at these cameras, I'm sure they're very highly technical, but they don't look very robust. And if you put one of those up on a stalk in the intersection, and the whole community knows that they're for surveillance, I could understand that perhaps somebody, not myself, would be very interested in either heaving a rock or taking a shot. Are they guarded in any way? This is a very expensive piece of tech, technology, and it looked pretty fragile.
I hope that didn't make the news, because these are all over the, uh, these are all over the freeways in the city of Detroit right now, and some of our neighbors have them, too, but that's a good point, you know.
Are they guarded, or are they heaving it, or?
What you offered with a rock, I think that would do it, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from the panel over there? No? No? Okay, thanks. Next, your name, please.
Hi, my name's Dave Hatch, and I'm a resident of Canton as well, I've been here over 40 years. One simple question is, do you also monitor motorcycles and ropeheads? Is there, you go strictly cars?
Utilizes the system, so you could tell.
Yes, sir, yes. It will capture license plates, whether it's up, you know, vertically or horizontally, just as easily. It, it captures the, the numerics and the letters of the plate itself. So yes.
I guess I'm trying to understand, too, exactly how's this working now? If they, are they photographing all these cars, and if you say there's a crime somewhere, how do they know that's the car? Does somebody report the car and the license number or stuff? Your example there showed that they had a photograph of the car, but if you're only doing one intersection and the crime's on the other side of the township, you know, how?
Correct.
How does that connect?
Then the tighter, as the chief had mentioned, then that's more time and resources for us to investigate it and try to identify that vehicle or person in other avenues or other investigative queries.
Thank you, next.
Evening, my name's Michael Woodard, I'm a township resident. Thank you very much for putting this all together. The, the presentation spent some time talking about the efforts that the department will take in terms of accountability and oversight and things like that. I was a prosecutor for 15 years, and I'm a criminal defense attorney, so I'm quite familiar with the police agencies in Wayne County, and frankly, I have a lot of faith in you. That said, with all of this data being retained for five years, it seems to me there will be a great possibility, even likelihood, that private interests will have their hands on it at some point. You mentioned that there's some sort of audit chain in terms of officers who access this, but it's also stored in a privately maintained and owned cloud. It's not something that Canton Township owns, if I understand correctly. And so, my concern is, I don't wanna start getting advertisements for an ice cream shop because my car is often seen driving by an ice cream shop. Or, I'm being, I'm being flip, but this type of immense amount of data in the hands of a private agency, to me, raises a great deal of privacy concerns. That's the first issue, how do you address privacy concerns? The second is, issue has to do with the, the discussion that the sergeant had about the crimes that were solved, apparently with the aid of this device. You said that the test phase was for 30 days at one intersection at Hagerty and Joy, around that area. But then I, I thought I heard you say that there were a couple of instances where vehicles that were parked were flagged. So I'm trying to figure out how a fixed camera on Hagerty near Joy would observe parked vehicles, and I wonder if the test process was more broad than what was described here today. And if so, that raises questions about whether indeed the info- And if so, that raises questions about whether indeed the information is being candidly shared. It's something that I heard, and I'd like you to address it. And then, third, you talked about a hot list that is generated, I thought you said, through state and federal databases for terrorists and things like that. But then I also saw something about a local hot list. I assume local to mean Canton Township. How is that generated? And would you be taking action based on that information?
Let me, I don't have Adam help out a little bit, but I can answer. We would control the data. There would be no opportunity for a private firm to access our scans. I can't be responsible for any other municipality or any other private entity that has this type of technology. That's number one. Our preference is to go to the general schedule for retention. So, our policy started over four years, probably five years ago now, where it's five years. And we just haven't moved to the, what we assume would be our first step. And if we were to change our retention schedule, which would be much less closer to what the ACLU is talking about, number one. Number two, we've had access to that database for, we've paid for that database for over four years now. That's why we have access to it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the one you were talking about at Walmart, how did you have access to that?
That was a demo login, so to speak, for a different LPR program, which is called Flock, which is different than Motorola. It's a competitor of Motorola.
Flock is real popular right now. The state of Michigan has just put those in on the freeways. And, question, the hot list stuff.
So, I can answer the one, sir, about where you had mentioned our demo camera as opposed to an image of a vehicle parked in a driveway, so to speak, maybe on the west side of Detroit. So, this is a database that we're not the only ones, so to speak, that would be dumping into it. It's dumped into by many other, I guess, commercial motor vehicles, law enforcement agencies, and not private agencies, but law enforcement agencies and commercial motor vehicles. So, if you guys see, there'll be a car, you'll see it in parking lots, driving around with cameras on it. That is an actual LPR camera. It's a private citizen, maybe that's being employed by an agency, maybe Motorola, to drive through parking lots and obtain this information otherwise. So, when you talk about a vehicle parked in a driveway, that could be a tow truck. Tow trucks, plenty of wreckers have LPRs affixed to them as well. So, when they're driving down the road, they're capturing license plates as we speak right now. So, when we get those scans on the road at a house, it's probably from a commercial motor vehicle that has an LPR fixed to it, a mobile LPR fixed to it.
Sergeant Paul?
Yes.
I'd like to add, too, is these civilian LPRs are typically banks paying civilians to look for their vehicles that have not paid their bills. So, we get access to that. That data comes into us. Doesn't get, our data doesn't go to them, but that data comes to us from the civilian side, and that's how we got that scan in the Walmart parking lot.
I think one of the things that I worry most about is my data and where does it go? And I think you bring up a very valid concern. One of the things that we had looked at with Motorola, the vendor for this, is that they signed a contract with us, and we will hold them to that contract, just like Motorola will hold us to ours. And so, in that contract, Motorola does not have access to the information. We are the only ones that have it. So, your concern is absolutely valid of, if Motorola came in and was able to access our information, they would then violate that contract. And I would assume our legal department, and I would hope the ACLU would take a look at it with us, and we'd have a unified front to find out why Motorola is violating the terms of their contract.
I think you also asked about a local hot list.
The local hot list as opposed to the NCIC list would be if my agency was investigating, we'll give it an example of a stolen vehicle. We may have information that it's driving around in, through our township. I would add that license plate of the stolen vehicle into the system as what we call a hot list or hot plate. And therefore, if it did get scanned, again, I would get the date, time, and the location in an immediate notification. I would get that notification in the form of an email or a text message. And therefore, I would be able to investigate that and maybe locate that stolen vehicle. And that's just a small example. It could be any crime that we're investigating.
I think the easy way to describe a hot list, on TV they call it, be on the lookout for a BOLO. I started in the city of Detroit over 20 years ago, and we were still on paper. And when I would come in, we had a thing called the pitchback, and that was our hot list. That's what, when we came in, they would read off a roll call of be on the lookout for these vehicles. Well, as technology has progressed, they're just now, they're digital instead of on a piece of paper. That way, all the officers are able to understand what the be on the lookout for of the hot list is to search for the vehicles.
The ACLU does provide recommendations with regard to manually generated hot lists, which I believe the chief has from our model policy. But essentially, those are only generating or manually entering license plates where it's believed that the person associated with that vehicle is relevant to an investigation that's currently ongoing. The reason for entering also needs to be documented. So, if you're putting in a manual entry, we recommend that they document why you're doing that and also purging those manual entries at the end of the shift so they are not maintained in that same mass data pool for the five-year period. And those are just our recommendations. They are not necessarily the policy currently, but just so that you have the ACLU perspective on that as well.
You know, with this group here, we have a lot of power. You know, there's a lot of people with good points. I think it's time as citizens that we try to have some uniformity around this, too. You know, it's part of my closing is, we need a uniform, probably law in the state of Michigan around this. So, these concepts that you're bringing forth today are important for not only us as we locally try to handle something, but as a state of Michigan, we need to look at this because there's a lot of concern around this, and the toothpaste is out of the tube, and it's time to do something about it.
Anyone else coming up to the podium? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, whomever.
Hi, yeah, my name is Mark Seitz. I've been a Canton resident for about 20 years. My question is for the chief and the other officers over there. First of all, gentlemen, thank you for your service to the community. My question is with regard to metrics. How will you measure the effectiveness of doing this? So, personally, you know, maybe I'm more than happy to have my license in a database if it recovers a child on an Amber List and reunites them with their family or something like that. And it's worthwhile. But if it doesn't effectively increase your case solving rate on crimes, I would rather not be on such a list. So, my question is, what metrics will you use to scale the effectiveness and really judge what this does for you?
It's a great question, because, you know, our last meeting, we were just setting our goals for the year. And one of the topics would be setting a percentage around what causes the most pain to our residents, which is around larceny. We would set a percentage. We haven't come to that conclusion yet. We would have to meet what would be appropriate, but that's what's growing most. And not only through LPRs, but as a tool, if that was approved, we would want to set, we're setting goals right now of trying to decrease larceny crime by a certain percentage. And you'll see that fluctuate from 5% to 10% a year. So, you'll probably see a set of goal around that area and see how LPRs can be used to minimize that. And given the fact that it's only in one location, the metrics might be a little bit harder because some of these issues are spread out throughout the township, not just one intersection, so.
Thank you. Did you have anything to say, or, okay. Next, I think you had.
Hi, thanks. The name is Rick Fulton. I've been a Canton resident for over 20 years and Michigan resident all my life. I would agree that the perfect opportunity to turn around and make sure we have some state references because there's obviously something to impact the whole state. So, I get the impression there's no real policy or laws in place. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then the second thing is, I assume that right now that this is just, you know, for Canton, please. But there's probably a whole list of commercial, you know, license plate readers that are out there that, you know, could be used as well, correct?
My understanding, it's prevalent through many, many different entities out there, and I don't have a grasp how deep it goes. But there's nothing that we know of that, that there's no oversight on the private side either.
So, I guess my only comment to that would be, it's like, just like we may have a, certain areas that are posted for, you know, speed limits, you know, we're putting up a traffic sign or whatever. Maybe that'd be opportunity to turn around and say, post an area. Not that a criminal is going to obey a sign or whatever, just to let, you know, somebody say that, okay, this area is posted, and, you know, could turn around and provide an opportunity for, you know, your normal resident to say, well, hey, I'm keeping an eye out, just, you know, watch what I'm doing, kind of thing, so.
Great idea. It's maybe something, you know, we could work on, not only internally, but maybe at state level.
And I also, you know, applaud your service and thank you for opening up to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Gabriel? Anyone else?
Name is Jen Burks. I am a resident of Canton for the last seven years or so. So, I have two questions for you tonight. It looks like from the presentation that at one point there were LPRs that were mounted on the police cars here in Canton. Is that right?
That's correct.
Was that a program that has been discontinued? So, kind of just a question as to what happened to that? Is that something that may come back in the future if it has been discontinued? And then I know you were talking about the database where you can pull information from other sources, that you have access to that. So, if we have access to that database, is that something that you only have access to if we also participate in like the Motorola program and have our own LPRs here? Or is that something you can continue to get access to even without having mounted LPRs here in Canton? If you are able to access that even without having our LPRs, I'm kind of wondering how much more effective having one extra intersection, you know, at one specific point in town, is going to be in getting information that's needed as opposed to just using these data points from other places?
Thank you for the questions. They're good questions. I'll let the sergeant talk about, I think there was technical issues with the cameras. Is this why they went down?
Yes, there was technical issues with the cameras. It was costing more money for repairs on those cameras. Couldn't go through car washes with little things along those lines that would cause more aggravation, I guess, at this point.
Second question, yes. It's, the impact of one intersection is not huge, but it would give us an opportunity to see how that works for Canton as compared to a full implementation like other communities. I thought it was the best measured way to do it. And it's just one option for us. And access to the system, we have access because we pay for it. It has nothing to do with our relationship with having a fixed point. Okay, thanks.
I think one of the questions was also, do we have still the ones in the vehicles, the two?
They're down right now because of the car wash, apparently, so.
Any other questions up at the podium? Anyone else in the room? Let me just see if our, I have four attendees here online. Do you want to ask any questions? You can raise your hands using the Zoom controls. Any other questions online? Does anyone else want to come up for some follow-up questions, those that have asked already?
Point of our question, are we going to be able to talk, the board?
Yep.
All right.
Yep. Nope, we have one more here. Yes. No, you can't talk. Sorry. You talked it up.
Give my three minutes.
I was trying not to come up. My name is Janeway. I've been a resident for 22 years. And I know you said this was not going to be used for civil infractions. However, I was coming up from Florida through Ohio on I-75, and a month later got a picture of my vehicle and my license plate and a traffic violation. Now, there was nobody on the road at the time, so obviously, they had an LPR somewhere. And I'm sure I was bebopping to 60's music, and my foot got heavy, so I paid the speeding ticket. But, as we talked about, what happens if you change your policy? I can see that it'll be real handy to see who's running that red light, who's going through on the yellow. Or there's a traffic accident, and somebody broadens a car who's, you know, because they're speeding through and they're turning left, and I guess policy changes are what I'm concerned about here. And when it happens, how it happens, and I didn't quite catch how that would happen. So, I'll just have to be very careful.
Thank you.
I wish we could just listen to the music and not answer those two questions. But number one with the, it's illegal in the state of Michigan to use it for traffic citations, so we would have a whole nother problem if we issued traffic citations for using this equipment, which, number one, can't be used. We don't have the technology within this type of equipment to actually use it for traffic citations. And that's not the intent for us. So, what I mean is, those are automated systems. I think you're probably in Ohio, I would imagine. I know some of the communities, I think at least one of us up here had a, passed a toll booth here in the last six months, and my wife had to pay for that, so. Those things happen, but they don't happen in the state of Michigan because it's illegal. Okay. And policy change, if there was a policy change, you'd first see it come through the state of Michigan, and we'd have to consider if that's something we'd want to do as a service for our citizens here. And I don't think anyone at this table or on that board right now, but they would have to make that choice. But there's no push for traffic citations being issued by an automated system. I think if you look at some of the studies over the last 19 years, I think it just came out this morning. I was reading somewhere, I think traffic citations issued by police officers in the state of Michigan, it's decreased 66%. Policing has changed, and I think that's just one little example of how policing's changed.
Thanks. You want to add?
If I could follow up with a question. Your policy has, at the end of it, a little line that says, review date, September 2023. When you do that review, does it go through this whole process again? Or is it sort of like, your team looks at it, says, yep, it still looks good, moves on? Like, how does that process work in your department?
We have our Calea accreditation manager here, but those are set forth because of our accreditation. The policies of the police department are reviewed by the command staff. He assigns them to each command officer. I'll let him speak to it, actually.
So, we do yearly reviews of our internal policies. So, we're divvying up into four different quarters. That way, we're always in a state of review. And then, once we craft our policy, we have annual reviews from Calea, which is a national organization, which is combined of many different, it's not just law enforcement, it's civilian, too, which provides best practices in law enforcement. So, then Calea does an assessment of us. They take a look at not all of our policies. We have, we're just shy of 300 policies, I think, now. Every, at least in a four-year cycle, they'll look at all of our policies. But each year, they take a section of our policies. They took a look at it. We have to do what's called standard. So, we have a policy that's, they look at, and then each section of the policy is reviewed, that we have to explain why that section is in there, again, to meet best practices throughout the country. And so, that is our review process that we're constantly in every single year. That cumulates in a four-year review when Calea actually comes on site. And then, it's one thing to have a policy on paper, right? It's another thing to do it. And we've all, everyone here has worked for a living, and we all know how that goes. And so, we try as hard as we can, and that's what Calea does for us, is they hold our feet to the fire. When they come in, they take a look at our policy. They do ride-alongs with us. And they just listen, and they make sure that our policies are actually being adhered to, which is the same thing that our command staff does on a daily basis.
I think you had asked a question. Did you want to ask a question? No, you, no. It was clear. Okay. Anyone on the, up here? Tanya? Tanya?
So, so what is the, you know, do we get a guarantee that the data at Motorola is like, is not hacked and used, and like, that's a bigger, that's a big concern, right? When we are digitizing information like that in this, like, you know, we, I'm sure you, you have information that you are on your computers that's digitized already, but when you're using a third party, there's a concern about that, so.
Relay here, but first, the, police department, I would assume Victor could probably speak to this, and municipalities are under attack all the time. Amazon Cloud Services is who protects this data, and I'd ask Victor, maybe, he's our ITI director, and he has a strong background in Amazon Cloud Services. I know the federal government uses it, and I don't know of a system better than Amazon, do you?
So, for data such as this, you have to realize that the location where this data resides is in a location that meets CG's requirement. The second thing to keep in mind is that Amazon Cloud is specifically built for government and law enforcement such as this as well, and it's totally, totally different from the commercial cloud where everybody else lives. What happens inside of the government cloud is that, one, that particular data infrastructure is located in the continent of the United States, and, you know, not everybody goes to that, so if you're thinking about something residing outside of the United States, that's not the case with regards to operations such as this. Once it's residing inside of government cloud, what we call the GCC, and it's being provided by Amazon, and government provides the specification for anybody who want to subscribe into, subscribe their business inside of the government cloud. So, security is very, very high, and again, it's not impossible, but a little bit more difficult, if I may put it that way.
I also wanted to thank our residents who came in on this cold evening to listen to this and give their feedback, and it's very important that we get our citizens' advice and feedback when we make a decision whether to implement this or not.
Summer?
Yes, thank you to everyone who came out tonight and brought up some really great points as we consider this policy, and thank you to Canton Police and Director Chad Brough for organizing this town hall, to hear from our residents, and, you know, you know, the opportunity for us to consider this, thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions that I would like to clarify. The first thing is, Director Ba, you said that this would be used for part-one crimes only, and so if we shared the data with another law enforcement agency, what assurances do we have that they would only use it for part-one crimes?
The assurance is the relationship, knowing how they work as a police department, or they're a credible police department, but at the beginning of the conversation and the exchange, we'd have to understand what the crime was to begin with, that's the only assurance we have, if we chose to share.
So if the information, the data was subpoenaed, it could be used for a purpose other than part-one crimes, correct?
If it was a legal subpoena or search warrant or order from a court, we would have to comply, I believe, unless, there's a caveat to there, there's certain things, there could be nefarious attempts maybe to obtain data, and I would probably refer to our legal department and wait for a judge to order me to provide the information, but generally, yes, to your question.
And then finally, I think part of the presentation said that the data could be used to find people on the terrorist watch list, and just, I'm just trying to think it through in my mind, because you said that we don't use names, so how do we match a license plate to the terrorist watch list?
Presentation, I believe it was talking about NCIC, right?
Yeah, I could tell you from my experience driving around, as I run license plates and things in front of you, we have what's called a wanted. So, a good example is going to be a kidnapping, so you have somebody that's kidnapping or a missing child, and we have to do an Amber Alert. Well, we know that that vehicle is involved, and so we would enter that into our information system as a wanted vehicle, which would flag, if a law enforcement officer runs it, it'll flag and say, this vehicle is wanted, and it's wanted for this, and then we know based upon what it is, if we need to stop it or not.
Okay, thank you, that helps, I was just trying to figure that out. Again, thank you for the town hall, I do want to mention again, you said this earlier, Director Ba, that all of our policies are on the website, and definitely want to applaud Canton Police for that, because you don't find that very often, folks putting their policies out, and I know that you worked incredibly hard for that to happen, so I know a lot of folks have brought up, if we do this policy, if things change, just want people to know that there is some transparency there.
Thank you, Michael.
And thank you for everybody, thank you to the police department for the presentation. I do have some, some concerns, and I've had some concerns from our first, our first meeting. You know, to get into here, or to ping this, you probably need a warrant, I would assume, because I have a right to privacy, I have a right not to be tracked. Why don't you need a warrant for this? I would assume it's because I have no right to privacy on a street. This is a public record, it is being used by a public agency for a public purpose. And all public records belong to the people of the state of Michigan, I mean, literally every, I mean, the chair I'm sitting in belonged to the Canton, the residents of Canton Township, this room belongs to the residents of Canton Township, but every record belongs to the people of the state of Michigan, and they have a right to view it, unless it's exempted by statute. And the exemption we would be relying on is that this would constitute an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy if somebody wanted to FOIA the aggregate data of those 60,000 license plates. I can tell you, as the office that oversees FOIA, that would not stand in a court of law. You can't say this would constitute an unwarranted invasion of privacy if there's no right to privacy by driving your vehicle on a street. And so, my concern is, I'm okay if you're driving around and you're pinging license plates periodically and you find somebody who's, you know, done a serious violent crime, or somebody has obtained, you know, has kidnapped a child, I get all of that, I understand the public policy behind that, but when you put one of these things at a fixed location, now you can aggregate patterns of individuals, and if the public can get access to aggregate raw data, someone's in an abusive relationship with a spouse, they now know everywhere they're going, and they're not using tracking or GPS, using public data at a fixed location. That's, that part really freaks me out. And so, I feel like it's irresponsible to continue to put these in if we don't have a specific exemption under the Freedom of Information Act in Michigan, that would actually hold up to legal muster. Because Google, Apple, yeah, they can track me all day long, I'm, you know, there's a commercial relationship here, but we are the government, and there's a different standard for us. Anybody can get access to our information, unless it's critical infrastructure, unless there's a good legitimate exemption. So, I really hope the legislature, especially if the cat's out of the bag, or the toothpaste is out of the tube, or the pickle, the cucumber has been pickled, I really hope the legislature jumps on this one immediately and exempts all LPR data from any Freedom of Information Act request. I mean, you know, we don't know how anybody votes, right? My office runs elections, but if you are a voter in Michigan, specifically if you've ever voted an absentee ballot, my God, you know they know that data. They know that you requested a ballot because they submitted a Freedom of Information Act for it, and they're going to, all the campaigns are going to email, are going to mail you their literature, and if you ever voted by mail, you got that, probably the same day or the day before, or the day after you got your ballot in the mail. And then when you return your ballot, that's public information, when you've returned your mail ballot. And if you haven't, some really sophisticated campaigns will mail you and say, please remember to return your ballot, using publicly available information, about a very intimate, important, critical government function. The content of your ballot, just like the content of that car, that's private, but where that ballot is in the public world and where that car is in the public world, that is not private. So that's one thing that concerns me, is that I do not believe that MCL 15.243 gives a good exemption for releasing this data if somebody wants it. And we can have all the policies in the world about that, but if it's not legal, the policy falls apart immediately when challenged in a circuit court. And you see that all the time with legislature, legislators who pass laws, feeling like a law is going to do one thing, but it's written a very different way, it doesn't matter what their intention was when they wrote that law, it matters what the words are on the paper, that's what the judges care about. So that's one thing that concerns me about the fixed locations, as long as this information is going to be public. Additionally, you know, the voters of the state of Michigan have decided that, you know, reproductive choices are healthcare, that is not the case in other states. And whether or not, you know, there's a criminal component to that in some states, but there's also a civil component to that in other states as well, where you can sue individuals, depending on what they do with regards to that. So, those are some things that I would definitely not want to see us participating in, and so I think it would be very important, not just for a department policy, but maybe for the board, to regulate through ordinance about how this information could be used if we were to do that, to make it actual law in Canton, and that's something I would also recommend the legislature take up, if the toothpaste is out of the tube when it comes to this kind of stuff. The end.
Thank you. Diane?
My colleagues have all said pretty much what I was going to say, I appreciate the presentation again, and opening it up for a town hall for residents to come in and give some good questions, I appreciate that. And I do agree, we do, are you working by chance with the legislature regarding policy on these, because it sounds like they're putting them up everywhere? Do you know if anyone is, in Lansing, is starting to work on?
That would be me, I am in Lansing, working on this.
Okay, perfect, so you are working, trying to get, fight under their feet to?
The legislative process is long and slow, as I'm sure you all know, but yes, we are in Lansing, the ACLU political department is looking at this with legislature and hoping that we'll get something moving.
Perfect, because Eric, like my colleague said, there are unintended consequences when you write laws, and so we want to make sure that we have, perfect. But thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for your input, it helps us a lot.
Ethan?
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming out, everyone. I do want to state that if this means I'm going to get coupons for ice cream, I'm probably going to be for it, because I love ice cream, as one citizen said, but in all seriousness, the board was presenting this about a month ago, and this session came out of that, that study session that we had, agreement between us and our, our public safety department that the community needs to be a part of this process, and so we asked for this session because this board is, made transparency one of its tenants when, as soon as we came in, so we think that's important. That said, the FOIA question that the clerk brought up was the one that really resonated with me, and I noticed that you guys had some great questions and didn't even touch on that piece of it, which, you know, is understandable because there's so many aspects to this to be thinking about. I hope you've gotten a feeling that we have a really great public safety department, and I trust them very much, but you need policies set in place for future generations to be able to feel comfortable that we're doing these things with the rights of citizens in mind as well. And so, can you elaborate a little more, is there discussion about FOIA of these things? Because that, to me, is a very concerning thing about all of this. I want our public safety officials to have the tools to arrest people who are doing bad things in our community, but I, I'm concerned with the examples that the clerk gave, that there's going to be, we won't have the power to keep people from doing other things with this information.
You're asking me, correct?
Yes, thank you.
It's hard to tell when we're all in a straight line.
I'm sorry, what was your first name again?
Gabrielle.
Gabrielle, thank you, Gabrielle.
Yes, so I don't know that FOIA has specifically been brought up in the conversations I've had yet, but privacy around pattern recognition and targeting specific groups of people is a major concern with any sort of surveillance technology, we just happen to be talking about LPRs today, but really any surveillance technology, there is a huge concern around, especially looking at people who may be in minority groups that are targeted more frequently. So, that's probably our top concern with any surveillance is privacy.
Yeah, because that, when you speak of that, you're sort of coming at it from an aspect of the government or something doing those things, but my concern, and yes, that is a concern, I'm not saying that's not a concern, but my concern is that any of us here can do that, any of us here can ask for that data or information for whatever purpose we have, positive or negative, and I'm not comfortable with this information being available to anybody, anywhere, anytime, and so, if you could include those in your discussions, I, that would make me feel better, that at least that's being talked about. Now, I will say that you've kind of gotten a feeling from the discussion that these things are already in our community, right? They're already here, the data's already here, even if we don't do the specific one, we can pull data from, well, I was on the board when we approved the, the, put the, the car that had the cameras on it as a test as well, and actually, I don't remember us specifically getting in data, I think I do remember a study session on it when it happened, but if we can go back and look at some of the data when those were in production, that would be great. But, these things are in our community already, you know, like, one of our officers said that they're looking for people who are trying to repossess cars that haven't been paid for, and that data gets uploaded already into databases that public, law enforcement can use already. And they're in, I think we learned that they're maybe in Van Buren and a couple other townships around us, and also, like was mentioned, on the state highway. So, I don't think this is going away, I think it's most important that we make sure that we monitor their use, get reporting, and we will commit to get reporting and, and how they're used and what they're doing, but to have the policies around them. And so, I mean, if I, if I could put a policy in place today that would, would only allow the people that we want to have access to the data, I would, but I don't think we can yet legally do that, so, that, that will be my concern going forward.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, thanks to everybody who came out tonight, it, you know, it's not fun having to give up an evening for this, but it's important, so I appreciate everyone being here, and thank you to our police department, Public Safety Chief Ba, and our police officers who are here tonight, it shows dedication, and also thank you to Anne Marie, our supervisor, for helping. for helping make this possible, too. So I also have some concerns, and I have some questions, unfortunately. Going last is not fun. Maybe Anne Marie has questions after me, so I won't be last. But I'm just gonna sort of start in a random order, because I don't really know how to order these. But I, I think we heard recently, and it's been alluded to here tonight, that the Michigan State Police are implementing LPRs. And so I'm wondering, will we have access to that data, that, that Michigan's, from the cameras that the Michigan State Police has?
Currently, we don't have a, what we call MOU, a memo of understanding with the state police on that. They're new. The sergeant may have access through like a direct phone call to get into the information. It's a FLOC database. It's a different camera system. That's another issue that's, we have to contend with, too. This is a competitive field, and there's a number of competitors out there.
Right. And we used to have that pilot access to FLOC, but we don't have that anymore.
Yes, I still do. Yes.
You do? Okay. You still have access to that. So does the, do we know right now, does the Michigan State Police have policies around the LPRs that they're implementing?
I have not seen it. I'm, I'm assuming the state police is one of the better, best agencies in the state of Michigan, so they, I'm sure they have a, a policy.
Can we find that?
MSP actually does have a policy.
Okay.
It's about nine pages long. I can send that to you if you would like to see that.
Thank you. Okay, so that, all being said, and Stephen had mentioned, you know, at our last session when we talked about LPRs, we've, we learned that Van Buren Township has LPRs, and some of the other surrounding communities have them. So, and this gets to the question that Jen asked, which I also asked at our last session. If these other community, other communities around us have LPRs, can we access their data? And so, you know, is, if we can access the database without having our own LPR, is that a benefit instead of having an LPR?
Yes, certainly. We, we do that now. We have access with other communities, either through partnership or general agreements with them. And we use it. He, Sergeant Flock uses it, I would imagine, at least weekly, to locate people that are wanted, or believed to have committed crimes and can. And would it be a benefit? The benefit only is of having LPRs in the community is we're picking up the cars that are in the community. Outside the community, you're only picking up the scans of the cars there.
Okay. And I understand that. I thought one of the reasons that we were talking about Michigan Avenue and back was because of cars that would be going in and out of Canton?
That would be one of the main locations where people come to and from their homes or other communities. So that's a major intersection for us in Canton. That's why we pick it.
And then, you know, getting back to the database and, and the sharing of Canton's data, I guess, you know, if, if other communities, other police departments are able to access our data that's been entered into the database, again, it's a concern as to whether or not, not only do we know if they are further sharing the information, but also do they have the same kinds of policies on retention? And, and, you know, like who, who gets access to that information within their own department, but then also externally? So I, you know, I think with LPRs, not having any state guidance on this is, we're kind of in a no man's land. And we, we need to think carefully about if, if we want to be trying to make our own policy. I mean, we have a policy, but are we trying to invent something? Or are we going to try to make sure that there's policy set by the state that then, you know, everyone can follow? Because if we have, if we have, if we have a policy, but then other departments, other police departments have differing policies, but yet our data's gonna be shared, that's, that's concerning, because there's no, you know, sort of governing policy for all departments.
You make a great point and a great statement. And, you know, with, we are in no man's land, and we need a state policy. And pat ourselves on the back a little bit as a community, number one, in this board and the police department. It wouldn't be the first time where we would be the people making it happen.
Right.
I'm not afraid to work with our partners to make it happen. So.
I think Mr. Andy's-
As long as it's followed, like, as long as, you know, people look to us and, and say, "Hey, they have a good policy," we're gonna adopt that as well.
I think Mr. Andy's wanted to comment on you, your questions also.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
So as far as the Michigan State Police, they've had LPRs for several years, and they started with Motorola. So we do have an active MOU with the Michigan State Police for access to their data for Motorola. The new LPRs that they are implementing in Wayne County and the Metro Detroit area are FLOC. We won't have access to those. We will have access to the other ones that they have throughout the state. And as, as far as sharing data, we share data with other agencies through a MOU. It's, it's a written MOU that states that they can only use this data for criminal law enforcement reasons. So an email comes to me if an agency wants to get our data. And it's not like we're, we're supplying them with thousands of plates. We're just supplying them with access to search our data. So if they're looking for, you know, a plate ABC, they can search our data for that. But they're not getting mass data. And that is only through an MOU.
Do we know that they have the same policies as far as access?
No. We, we can't control their policies.
Right.
So no, we don't know. But we do, when we grant them access through that MOU, that we state that you can only use this data for criminal law enforcement reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
Gabrielle, did you want to add anything?
Having the MOUs with the other departments is a really great step. There's always concerns when sharing. And I think our biggest concern would be sharing, I shouldn't say our biggest concern, because it is a big concern, like somebody mentioned reproductive healthcare earlier. That's a big concern, because it is not illegal in Michigan, and it is other places. So a big concern is with third-party sharing, not necessarily police department to police department. But there is certainly a level of concern there. It's more when it gets into commercial use that I think we see higher concern with that.
Director Ba, did you have any closing remarks?
First, you know, I like to thank the citizens coming out. I know you've been thanked a lot tonight, but this is one of the rare opportunities. I can't think of my 27 years of a town hall where we open it up with the direction of the board and the support of the board to have this opportunity. So I thank you for coming out. I think the board, you know, again, thank you for leading. Thank you for being a part of, you know, setting course, you know, policies and procedures and potentially law to make the citizens feel, which is you, to have a voice in the level of service to your community. So I appreciate that. Again, this is a measured approach. Every question that you asked, I think, almost every question I ask myself. But as a police chief, it's very important. I give my folks the tools. We've become a big community, and we need to be as responsible and efficient and effective to, you know, we have a very low crime rate. It's a safe place to be. And tools like this help maintain that for the good of everyone. So, thank you again. And back to you.
Gabrielle, did you have any closing remarks?
I wanted to say thank you for having me here. And thank you to Chief Ba for inviting the ACLU in to collaborate on a policy. I think that shows, you know, great respect for privacy for the citizens. So thank you so much for having me here. And if you have any questions, I have some business cards. I'm happy to leave those out as well.
I think you have a sheet on this, also, that people can look up on the website. Okay, thank you. I want to, yeah, I thank everybody for coming, our residents. And we have the greatest police department. We have the greatest residents. We have the greatest board. I do want to say, you know, as an engineer, I know a lot about data. And, I mean, we'll all probably go home with our phones tonight, and ice cream will pop up, I think I heard. LPRs are gonna pop, we're gonna have all kinds of things popping up.
I already ordered some.
It's already ordering. I mean, our phones, as a government, as, you know, we, we use data on our residents to determine what kind of programs to put out there for you, to determine, you know, what kind of things that you might need in the future. I know how much gasoline you all spend when you leave Canton versus spending it inside. That's what we use with data. So data can be used for good, but data can also be abused, as we see when we had earlier our cybersecurity discussion, you know. And we have to do that balance. We have to decide what's best for everybody. So do we do just a trial, run and measure our data? Or do we say, "No, we wait till the state comes along and gives us some direction on this?" We know that this is happening all around us, right? LPRs are everywhere, as was also said. It's on the highways. So more and more is happening. Does, we even see it privately. Private companies are collecting our data with LPR data. They're driving down our roads, and they're collecting it, whether we know it or not. So our question is, is we have to decide whether or not Canton Township wants to be a part of increasing this data collection, or do we put the brakes on and say, "No, we'll, we'll get there when we can." So there's a lot of decisions that we have to be, make. And we really appreciate you being here. So please continue with your comments, emails, and calls, which will help us, you know, make our decision and determine what's best for us and what we want to do as a community in our region. But thank you for coming, and have a good night. And please continue the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.